Open the meeting at four fifty-seven. Wanna do the heavy people over here, so they can go along the way?
Sure.
Send. Yeah, I do. You getting this footage on? Turn your own equipment.
Yeah. Monday is leading day for that timber tax. And they've made no payment, and they've made no attempt to make any sort of agreements, so...
This is Del and Ellie?
Yeah. Yeah. So... Yeah. Otherwise, things haven't changed since last time.
Okay.
One or two maybe have paid up. At the bottom, there's the SCFRC funding, which is New Freedom Academy. And I've reached out to them, and they have not responded to any sort of phone calls or notices, so...
Have you got a problem with the new patch?
Once they changed over from their old, when they got bought out last year, December's bill didn't get paid until April, and now this one's not getting paid. So I just don't want to start up a pattern of being behind.
Yeah.
I have some other additional contact information.
Okay.
On Wednesday, Sam.
Okay. Conference was good. I saw the folks from LHS, and I asked them what the story was. And he said that they might be getting out pre-orders for the building machine in January, or February for March. So I asked the... He was pointing at Secretary of State, saying Secretary of State hasn't done any of their pre-checks, so we can't sell the machine until we've got the pre-checks done from Secretary of State. And so I asked the LHS guy that came today, I said, "What's the story?" And he says that they are waiting, that Secretary of State won't let them pre-sell them. I'm like, "Well, there's a lot of towns in this state that have appropriated money, and none of us are gonna be pleased, so just keep on top of it, and hopefully they're gonna come up with something."
Yeah.
So... Other than that, I think it was quiet.
Good. Morning off.
Yeah.
And Jesse said she wanted to go up.
Yeah. That was a good exposure for her to go and see that.
Yeah. She was really excited, I saw her getting a mail. Anything else? We're all set.
All right. In the last three weeks, it's also been bad. Those are our calls year-to-date, we're running about six percent higher than last year, call volume-wise. Bunch of different events this month, but the most interesting one was last weekend. It was, we helped rescue a horse down in the southern part of town. The horse had fallen, well, it lay down to scratch itself because of an uneven brine. Horse couldn't get out, three members, two or three of them there, couldn't do anything, so... They called us, we used our experience, expertise, and some of our equipment, and was able to probably within a half hour time get the horse on its feet. Did the time of veterinary, showed up, horse suffered no injuries, just needed a hand get help. Because of the uneven brine, so... People were thankful, good story, we put it on on social media, and who doesn't like a good ending, yeah?
It's a good story.
Yeah.
I've already got a little blog where it moves out of front of numbers, so I'd like being there to pick a set of room in there, so... So that's good. On the prevention side, it's been a lot, it's been a busy month. It usually is a prior prevention month, but New Freedom had their annual inspection last week. Cambria Elementary School has their annual required inspection this month. And the three self-storage facilities have been working with them, mainly to gain access to test the lab system and sign off on all that stuff, so I've had positive responses from basically all three facilities, it's two owners, three facilities. Different owner on 106, and there is down on...
They own both the ones down there.
They're two on our road, down at the same owner, the one on 106 is different owner.
So are they making any progress on getting alarm systems in there?
No, so by calling too hard, they didn't need one on the household self-storage, but they did need one on the, where the RV is.
For fire, or?
Yeah, yeah, fire, and so... But mainly, I was looking for access, 'cause all, both properties are surrounded with an electronic gate, so access for us to get in, it's what they're working on down at town to get that, and that's gonna work as we speak, so...
Seems quieter down there, I assume, right?
Yeah, 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 so I tried to go out once, we get all the, to check the progress, make sure the gate's not on before, 'cause we don't have access yet, but they're not putting a roof on, so I know it's blocked, it's not completely, so... And I coordinated with Loudon, because they listed either 106, if there's a fire there, we're third due. It's Loudon, it's not on, and even if we're at the safety, we'll probably third due, so coordinating with them to be able to get in there. In public education, a lot of requests, we had three separate sessions for the elementary school last week. This week, we've got Breaker School we're doing, and then next week, we're doing Dewey School, just the fire truck showing, and all that stuff, and gear, and fire safety talks, so... They look forward to those, they requested those, that's what we're gonna be doing. Membership, one member resigned, he moved out of town about six months ago, and he tried, really wanted to try to make it work, just not working, so he resigned, had four and a half years on the continent here. And one member who's staying, and I'm just stepping out when we leave the position for personal reasons, so I'm pretty soon making a member of the department. And then, other than that, communications equipment, the grant that we got, I'm getting ready to order all the seventy-two thousand dollars worth radios. I just wanna make sure the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed, as far as human requirements go, that we want three different bids for the equipment and all that stuff, unless we go through a state bid, so I'm navigating through all that, and I expect by this time next week, they will be ordered. And hopefully, this, they're not back for too long by every year to complete the project, so... I signed off on the fire truck final drawings today, they were sent in, so the clock starts ticking now. And then, we're doing extra cage draining next week. If you drive out of fire, I would assume two B F cars sitting in the driveway there, hopefully, we do those every year, to help those fire, to keep the skills high, right?
Any rusty acquisitions, or?
Yeah, yeah, I always write him a thank you letter, and we're gonna post some letters, hopefully, those letter, ask pictures of those letter as well, 'cause he broke rusty, he puts a little bit of that on the side of the car just like that. Yeah, but he's been great, we call him, and he just comes right to us, what I mean, so he's been really good. Yeah. That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it?
That's it, yeah, not that long with it, but you guys will want to talk.
It's not too personal, what went on at the spruces today? Saw the ambulance on the fire.
You mean yesterday? We weren't there today.
Yesterday they were.
We were there yesterday for liposynthesis. There's one person that probably calls once a week, or she falls out of bed or off the toilet, or something like that.
Get out.
Yeah, yeah, so nobody heard, she definitely don't transport, very, very nicely, very thankful for assistance.
Any questions? Free to fly.
All right, thank you, have a good evening. What, because I just seen the channel now, I kinda like it. Don't make any changes to the TV, other than, I guess, I gotta ask, what would I do about recruitment? We didn't have a test two weeks ago, and everything failed.
I saw that.
So, I guess.
I mean, me and I would fail something.
I'll be good to the requirements, if you'd like.
Oh, I know I would, I can't run.
So, but other than else, it's going all right, I mean, we did have some homeless people living in their storage facility, but they've been since vacated, so there's two things.
See, the mess is cleaned up down there somewhere, too.
Yeah, we move through that every day.
Yeah.
Little shifts, little so it...
So then driving through, I don't know what I'd do, just watch it.
Yeah, there is some trash at the end of the road, so, but it's private property, so I'm sure we'll deal with that, too. Yeah, so the recruitment problem, courses problem, we're a whole state, so...
What are these guys doing instead of coming and working for us?
A lot of the owners don't want to do group work, no. But you're competing with every agency in the state that is raising pays, giving sign-on bonuses, and now the new thing is take-home cruises, which is happening all around us.
Yeah, like...
Loudon, I was just told, and I haven't confirmed it, they started letting their offices take the cars home. So I haven't confirmed that, I was just told that the other day. Northfield's doing the same thing, so... Warner's giving pay raises, Boston's giving favor, probably everybody's giving pay raises.
Yeah, everybody is.
Sign-on bonuses. I mean, Loudon just lost an officer to Alden, which was a ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus and thirty dollars an hour. So, that's what you're competing against. So anybody trying to get into law enforcement can pick wherever they wanna go and make whatever they wanna make.
So I just sign up and start working for you, or?
You can, I gotta pass.
You gotta pass the P D.
That's the start. Criminal background check.
Yeah, I know.
Chief has been looking at, looking for a used cruiser to see if he had to the fleet, 'cause I figure one might give us enough, should give us enough that we could offer a take-home vehicle. So he's been, they've been looking around to see if they can find something that might fit the bill, so...
So are they, are we giving them something special, or we just, when we need to, or how does this work?
So if you end up, if you end up doing the take-home cruises, what happens is the policy has to kind of play. Usually, there's a mild limit, so, or a time limit, it's usually about half an hour, half an hour ride from here, no further. It would be only to and from work, no stops, no going to the store, no going, picking up the groceries, nothing like that. No family members in the cars, strictly to and from work.
We're paying for gas on these things, or?
Mm-hmm, it'd be your vehicle, your insurance, your, you know, so... Like, if you took it right now, Vincent would not be allowed to take home, he lives in Bel Air, Mass. Clearly, way too far. And if you go by, like, Merrimack County, obviously, they all have take-home cars, and every county sheriff has take-home cars along with state police. Some of the small towns have them, Merrimack County, if you don't work, if you don't live in Merrimack County, you're not allowed to take it out of Merrimack County. So they would park it further than most PD. So Vincent decided he wanted to drive home, to hide it out of the wood, he would have to park it outside PD, and the furthest.
Well, she lived in Mass?
He lives in Bel Air, Mass.
Bel Air.
He stays here overnight during the summer week, he stays right at the station.
Done working out?
No issues, cleans up after himself every day, and you don't even know he's there when he's there.
Yeah, so... Well, we set the whole thing up so it was sort of usable like that.
Yeah, it's actually a nice bunk room they got now. Once the floor gets done for the second bunk room, there'll be a male-female separation. Not that we have that issue right now, but any town employee, if there was a problem, would be able to do that. So... But, so to think about, I mean, I know it's a money thing, it's...
Yeah.
You know, you get two thoughts, like, if you get the sign-on bonus, which a lot of people do, I think that hurts the people that you employ for you now, because you're promising this individual ten, fifteen thousand dollars over the course of three years, on top of the regular pay, which the other offices are not getting. And there's no loyalty, because at the end of the three years, they can just leave and jump and get that somewhere else again. Where if you just give the pay, or the take-home cruiser, or something else, it's rewarding to people that are actually working for you as well. It is minimal. Cars will last a little longer. Officers tend to take care of the vehicle a lot, who the only ones assigned to it. I can tell you my son works for agency, he has a take-home cruiser. Of course, he's in Virginia. But that's a two-hundred-and-thirty-man and woman department, and everybody who lives in the city limits has a take-home cruiser. They are allowed to drive it anytime they want, which is a little weird to me. They can go to the grocery store, they can, as long as they have their gun and badge on them, they can do it, they just... If something comes up, they actually have to go.
We're not concerned with someone down in South Carolina, or where?
No.
Well, it sounds like what's coming at us, doesn't it?
Pretty much, I mean, everybody's gonna start to do it. It usually takes a long time, but the southern states have been doing it for years. And we've been pretty far behind, I mean, you got a lot of agencies that have them now, bigger cities don't have them. Especially up north, a lot of them have them now. You know, so... And some offices may just tend to say, "Yeah, no, I don't want it," but I don't see that happening.
Yeah.
Because it's, you basically can go home like this, and then come in like this, so you're ready to go. And as soon as you hit the town line, you sign on, and you're ready to go. So, there's really no need to come to the station. I can tell you that myself, and then if the lieutenant takes mine home when I'm not around, and I'm on vacation, as soon as we hit the town line, we drive around, instead of going to the station. You're on the street pretty much quicker, too, so... But, because it's an incentive, doesn't mean it'll solve it, but it might get those certified, or certified people willing to come home for that, come here for that, so...
Something...
Always about money, isn't it?
Well, yeah, it would, yeah.
It is, it is. So, like, I've been looking for the used cars, we're never gonna get the deal we did when I first came on, we go, "I can get that for ten grand." There's nothing else like that.
Yeah.
I mean, cheapest one I found was twenty-three, twenty-four grand, that was seven years old, which is... That's not gonna last. Looking at the newer ones, they range anywhere from forty-seven at Earlonne, which cruises are ridiculous now. We paid thirty-two for the last two we bought, thirty-two, thirty-three, I think. They're like forty-five now, for the same vehicle, so... I have three different prices right now, for newer ones, for new ones. And it's from forty-two to forty-seven, and some change on both ends. But those are hybrids, those are all hybrids, by the way, so... Which, twenty-eight point five gallons per gallon, that's like a twenty, fifteen point five on the average, on the one I drive. So I'm assuming that one's pretty close, other than that, that probably idles a lot more on the street, but it's still better, because it really doesn't idle that bad. That's what you're looking at, of course, any good lights in it, but there's no... You know? It doesn't have to be the top of the line, stuff like the box and stuff can be added all the time. Doesn't have to be right away, you can do that over the next year or so, or the next year, but if you decide to do this year, which is a real quick decision on your part, we do have the salary from the office that we don't have. Her salary, plus her benefit package that she had, is in the budget. You know, so that money's, I would think, is there, I have to sit down and look, but...
So we've just been banking this, is it?
Well, her salary's been there all year long, she, we haven't been able to hire anybody to take her spot in that, so that money's sitting there, so...
Bottom line budgets, yeah.
Yeah, they have some bottom line budgets, so... That's kind of how we got my car that first year.
Yeah.
It was because I started in August, so the money was sitting there from January to August, from the previous June, okay, here. So... Other than that, you have the asset account for fifty grand to get the car and outfit it, so...
Do we buy those through somebody, or how does this work?
So normally, you'd have to order them, like, if, we always have been ordering through repolings. It's a place in Mass, it's Colonial Ford, out of Massachusetts, or that's one of the places. There's an HQ, but we reached out to Colonial Ford today, which they have Colonial Municipality Group, so... Same company, but it's just a, for them, so they order these, they had a hundred and seventy-eight cruises on their lot. Ready to go, you just make a phone call. So...
How many?
But...
So...
So food, the thought for you guys, so...
I know you'll discuss it, but...
I've been by you Ken almost every week, so, to figure out what we can do.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of sad that nobody...
Yeah, and if you look, if you look at the advertisement, Ken's been on this, so when you look there, every single town is hiring. They all offering something, like, hookset, just like, for the fifteen thousand dollar sign-on bonus. You know, and they're not getting any either, so it's... Just some of that's why, you know, for law enforcement in general.
Yeah, well, even state police.
Yeah, state police, yeah, sixty, seventy-five guys.
Yeah, I just saw that somewhere.
Yeah.
And they, they have a sign-on, don't they, now?
Uh, I don't know.
I think so.
Probably.
I think so. It's a lot of twenty?
Could be, yeah.
And they burn their clothes, or?
They do, yeah, and they sign on from their house.
Yep.
Sign on from their house, go to court, you know, same thing that I, yeah, so... Yeah, and then cars are taken care of, and like I said, they, when you sign a car, it's somebody that's gonna last longer, because they're, they're gonna keep up on it, when you, when you train them around, nobody thinks they're responsible for the whole car. Because, you know, that's what Justin's for, he actually monitors all the cars and makes sure that everything's good, tires, but I can walk by and say, "He's driving those tires," or, and I shouldn't have to do that.
No.
You know, because people should monitor it, but, you know, so...
A lot to think about.
Yeah, food the thought, so, all right.
All right.
Other than that, everything's good.
Good.
No major crimes going on, or nothing like that.
How's your house coming?
Good, good, I'll be here for a little longer than expected, though.
Good.
So, my wife and I had a conversation about it. Might be here a little longer than expected. I don't wanna work for two dollars an hour down there, so...
Two bucks an hour?
It was pretty bad. One job I got offered, it was very low pay and one week vacation. That included sick leave, so we'll wait a little longer.
Good idea.
Yeah, so we, we came up with a plan, so, I thought I'd just fuck with Ken about that, so... Just switch my schedule around a little bit, and I'll fly down here quite often, that's all.
Yeah.
Just, the budgets that we have aren't the correct ones that we hand out tonight.
Oh, okay.
But the PD budget is only fifty-eight percent spent right now, so...
Well...
For food.
Yes. So, I'm sure you let Ken know, if you find something, take it from there. Right, Scott?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. Oh, then you...
Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you, Jim. Oh, great. Wow. I was gonna ask if you're okay, but now I do. Okay, the budget.
Did I give you the wrong one, did I give everybody the wrong one?
No.
Oh, it's a screen. It needs to be a double change. Oh, you're talking about this?
Mine, mine says two thousand twenty-two on it.
Yeah, mine just too.
I just, I was looking at it, I'm like, "Hey, something's wrong with this," and I went with the maid, and I said, "Oh."
I was just me being your friend, going like, "Something's wrong with Ken."
Oh, no, I just printed the wrong things.
Okay. Okay, then I'm all right. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, so good, I am glad that's my budget, because that looks like what I've been working on. Thank you, Rosie took the call today about the roof.
Yeah.
And, what's his name?
Peter Gallas.
Gallas.
G-A-L-T-I-S.
Peter Gallas, perfect.
Were you using him on this?
He met me and looked at the library and looked at the missile building, and he's coming tomorrow to go inside. He's been on the roof down here.
Great.
And I think he's been on the roof over there, but he's gonna go inside both buildings tomorrow, and go up in the drop ceiling and take a look, and see if he can figure out exactly where the water's coming in.
Just up at the sand lake, or down here?
No, at the library.
At the library, okay.
And up at the fire chief's office.
Here.
Oh, God, we got a leak there, too?
It's been leaking there for a long time, yeah, and we've been trying to find somebody to fix it.
Beer bucket, or?
Yeah.
Thank you for acting on that.
Yeah.
Are we gonna talk to him about this building, too, or the...
He, uh... I thought he said he was gonna meet somebody here to look at the shingles on it or something?
Roof.
Yeah.
It wasn't me, I don't know who I talked to.
No, it wasn't me.
Well, when I talk to him tomorrow, I'll check with him about this.
I wanted to see if he could give us a number on repair and the damages that's happened.
Okay.
And then he said he could put on gutters cheaper than anybody else, if he could give us a number.
All right, I'll talk to him about that.
We are gonna have to think about where we're gonna put this water, I think. We could dump it more than in Rachie's front yard, because she probably wouldn't like it.
I have drain pipe right there, so...
You do?
Got it, saw this building?
Yeah, yeah, because they're splashing up and ruining the siding.
Yeah.
You'll be with him tomorrow, or should I have him just come over here and look?
Um, if you want to send him over here and have him take a look, that's fine. He was gonna give me a call when he got done, and just so you know, we're...
So look at the roof peak, and then look at the siding?
The roof, the siding, and gutters.
You got it. Can do.
Did you meet up there, or? Did you meet up?
Yeah, 'cause this isn't, it's not leaking, so you shouldn't have to get in.
Yeah.
And this is not what the Berwick's doing, Berwick is still gonna do...
The door, a lot.
Okay, so thank you for that. In terms of maintenance, I am getting to the point where I need to look for a retrofit door opener. We are eighty-eight compliant, of course, and the law does not state that we need an automatic door opener. But quite a few years ago, a resident had given some money, five thousand dollars, to get an automatic door. That doesn't cover a true automatic door, but Loudon Maxfield Library has a retrofit opener, which I would wanna check with Joel to see. But I'm gonna work on that for next year in terms of maintenance. I don't think I need to paint next year. I think we're gonna go another year without. But once I get my roof patched, I think we're all systems go on the building. I am, other than that, I am working with the trustees tonight, and I'm second round of my budget. So thank you for that, Cal, I appreciate that working budget. And our budget looks real good this year, so I've got some grant money that I've been using, so I just need final approval, and then from the trustees, and then that'll be ready way before November first. Thank you for that. And other than that, all systems go.
I heard you were back.
I'm back. Reentry.
Was this fun?
Yeah.
All good?
It's good, it's good. Eric has only two relatives here, and eighty-six relatives in Norway, so...
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's good to go back home to Norway.
Pictures to call?
Pictures to follow, but it was wonderful.
Good.
It's always good in Norway, where they don't have to worry about hiring police officers and getting them cruising. So...
Any more, any questions, anybody?
You're free to fly.
Thank you, thank you. Where's Big John, is he okay?
Uh, he's on vacation this week.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right. Excellent, I'll ask the second question.
Thank you. Bye, Edgar.
Do you want to sign the manif?
Yeah. Do you want me to give you a quick update on the highway?
Yes.
Uh, so the grader is fixed.
Oh, oh, that was, they were, the fix? Yeah.
It was a little less than a thousand dollars. We have one employee whose last day is the middle of this week.
You're sure?
Yep.
Were you using the kid down at the farm there for mowing and stuff, or what are we doing?
I asked, and John was gonna offer to him, so I don't know what, if he's doing it or not.
Somebody did the cemetery, I saw that.
Okay, yeah. We have an interview with a candidate for the highway department next Thursday, so we'll see how that goes.
I think that's about it, I think that's about it.
You go to one, they got the grade rock, right?
Yes, yes.
You ready now?
Yep.
I have a. Towns payable manifest in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Sure moved.
Second. I'm sorry, you go to Ken?
Yeah.
You remember that, huh?
Yeah, maybe.
I have a payroll manifest in the amount of. Fifty-two thousand six fifty-one ninety-nine.
Sure moved.
Second. Ooh. On this form, she's got a mistake on one of them. Oh, uh, can you show me?
Yep. Oh, oh, that's because that's the twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
That's last year, it's for comparison.
So, but we don't have to sign this one?
You don't have to sign that one, just this one.
Scared me for a minute.
Was that the chairman's pocket?
And you're trying. And we have a twenty-twenty-three MS one DRA form, which is a summary of inventory of evaluation.
Just get seconded, it was moved.
Do we ma- move to?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion to sign it and then.
Sure moved.
Second. Thank you, Cal, for straightening out. Last two days I've been spinning around, what, what was I doing?
That is the revised MOU for, um. The building inspector, uh.
Oh.
Convening with Boswood, because we had one of the select board members' names wrong on the one that you had signed, so.
Yeah.
So we just gotta sign that one.
Oh, okay.
We fixed it, we, we were able to, we changed it, so you just have to have it signed, and they already signed it, so. And the next thing is the BMGI signature page, and that was the application for the BMGI money that, uh, grant money that Comcast is applying for. And they, that's the signature page from the town to sign, because it's, it's a combined application. Both the Comcast and the town both applying for the funds, so.
No, it's just.
If you could sign it, yep, and print, print your name and then sign it.
Okay.
I got a request from somebody today, did I know when it would be operational? Don't hold your breath. This government we're talking about here.
Uh, yeah, they, the state had said that they were hoping the grants would be approved, um, before the first of the year. So we would know by then, definitely. And then, obviously, the work has to be done, so if we get the grant, so.
You said before they were gonna start anyways, right?
They are, they, they have been working on some of the infrastructure, they got licenses, whole licenses and things that they're working on right now. So they're in preparation, so they should be ready to go, um, hopefully sometime after the first of the year.
Minutes, did you read that? What do you mean? Just one, the mommy woke up.
Ain't working.
Ain't working, is it? You get time out. You don't have a coffee? Oh, I do, I'm, I'm.
Did you end up meeting with Lightner or did you see him down?
Uh, he actually came in today and, uh, he was going to contact the HCC and. Then asked me to come in and, or asked to come in and meet with you guys to go over the recommendations, what the attorney said, and put them in a form. On the warrant article, uh, the ones that need to be voted on, um, so I sent him. I sent him a couple of, uh, uh. Warrant articles from past years where there were zoning changes, so he would have a template. And so apparently something wrong in the email. I had sent it to him last week and he didn't get it, he came in today and I sent it to him again. He called tonight and he hadn't gotten it, so I sent it to a different email address, so hopefully he'll get it. He was gonna meet with the HCC and then we're gonna do it, bring it back to us.
Do you read the, um, fence book?
Well.
Joanna Mishno came on there and said that they lived in a cluster zoning situation out there. And that land prices are too high. I don't know what she expects. Anyways. This looks good to me.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, we adopt the minutes as written.
Second. You can have them.
Yeah. I had another marriage.
Oh, I got one. Ah, new, new business.
Yeah, I have, we received an offer to purchase town own land, um. The offer letter is here with the information that's in together. It's on Canterbury Shore Drive.
Yeah.
Just the one we were talking about out there the other day.
Yeah, uh. So they, they bought a piece of property out there, I think Lot thirty-seven or thirty-six, and they offered the purchase on Lot thirty-seven, I believe.
Yeah, look, that's the one that, uh. The town owns.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the highlighted one is the one the town owns.
It's, uh, thirty.
Thirty-six, isn't it?
Yeah, no, yeah, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay.
Yeah. Going away for Scott to get back, so he knows what's going on. Thoughts?
Yeah, I, I mean, this is one thing that typically the whole board can get to review, so.
I, I'd like to move to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is good.
If anything else comes from the weather.
Yep. You saw the FEMA notification for the flood insurance?
Yes.
Okay. Um. This, Cal's been working on the RFP for the website, to revise the website. So that will, that will be forthcoming. Um. Gonna show it to me first, and then we'll look at it. Probably send it out to you guys via email and see what you think, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Um. The school withdrawal committee voted on last Monday night, uh, to withdraw from the school district, a five to two vote. They now have to provide a majority and minority report to the Board of Education by November first. Uh, the. If they approve it, if the Board of Education approves the withdrawal, um, or the report, then. The towns, each town would have to vote on it by ballot at both the town meeting and the school district meeting. And if it is approved by the towns, then we have to budget for an attorney to set up the district and hire a superintendent and staff. And so it finds a place to house them. So, um. There's. I, I got an email from, um, Randy Johnson, the chairman of the committee, and, uh. I asked if she was gonna, that the committee was gonna post something for the town, and they said that they would after the reports were done, the majority and minority reports were done. They would put that out and, um, let people know, allow with, with, uh, information, so.
Okay. That is one person that I haven't been getting emails from until after the fact, for someone.
Okay.
And, and I don't, I, there's a couple of them that, like, when you send me stuff, for some reason I'm not getting it. I, some of it comes through, but if it's something with, like a report.
An attachment or something, it's not coming through?
Yeah, it, it takes it. And I, I thought it's probably, my gravity is a little more of a war out, but, um.
Is it going to your junk email folder, or is it just?
You know, I didn't.
Getting lost in the ether.
It, it shows up, but not, you know, within an hour. And I would have been at the school meeting at a mall, but I didn't get it until I got home.
Okay.
Five days later.
Um. The cybersecurity audit that we went through with, uh, the cyber. Infrastructure and Security Agency, um. They finished the audit, they gave us the report, they sent us the reports. Cal and I joined in a, uh. A video chat on Friday along with, uh, a representative from Cybertron or IT company. And, um, they went over the report, there's some recommendations for us to do some things, so we're gonna work on that. And, um, but I think we're, we're not in bad shape, but there are, they made a few recommendations, so.
Good.
We will be working on those. And I think that's all I got.
Yes.
You missed the moderator.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, um, yep, uh. I got a request from the planning board for a moderator for the next visioning session. Um. And I contacted Jim Miller, the town moderator, to see if he was interested, and he is. So I will send his information to the planning board and central launch planning, so they can contact him and. He will be the moderator for the next visioning session.
When is that happening, Dan?
Uh, November fourteenth. They're hoping to have a draft of the master plan by then for you.
Now, did Randy, Randy, that's how, going backwards a little bit, did Randy give you any idea when their next meeting was, or are they just doing this stuff and submitting it?
She did not say, did not say. I think, uh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I would imagine they would have to get together for the reports.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. Do you have anything?
Well, have we tackled this thing down on Will Street at all, or is that just?
What's that?
Yeah, uh, the co-enforcement officer has written a letter to, for a possible zoning violation, or two possible zoning violations on Will Street.
Ah.
So. They're being addressed, we'll see what the, what the response is.
I think I know it already, I think I've heard it.
Anything else? Anything else, Cal? Yeah, so, you good? Make a motion.
I make a motion, adjourn.
Second.